Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. My name is Barb Warwick and I chair the Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology. The department will hear from today for this hearing is the Department of Innovation and Performance, which is the IT department, basically. First, I'd like to, well, so we have the members of IMP here at the table and we also have our budget director, Peter McDevitt, and he will start by giving a brief overview of the department.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Today, we're going to talk about IMP and the mission of the Department of Innovation and Performance is to elevate the work of city government. To accomplish this, IMP continues to focus on developing and strengthening the core of IT infrastructure in the city while also improving IT service responsiveness for all city workers. IMP will also continue supporting all the other departments to implement enterprise applications, data governance and analytics, and apply best practices in project management. Further, IMP engages and partners with colleagues across all departments to drive innovation, process improvement and operational excellence across the city on behalf of the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. And a quick overview, the Department of Innovation and Performance is divided into the following general service areas: IT Operations Reliability, Security and Risk, Business Technology, Operations Performance Excellence, Communications and Administration. In the operating budget, there is a total of 66 full-time positions, which is an increase of one position from 2023. So overall, that is an increase, it comes out to, and there's a number of swaps from '23 to '24, so overall, there's an increase of about $270,000 or 6%. Those employees are made up of non-union and ask me '27/19. And then a summary of non-personnel charges, changes. Overall, a $2.5 million increase in non-personnel expenses. Many IT projects citywide are included in IMP's budget, so it's not just their services, it's services across the city that IMP manages and pays for out of their own coffers. Workforce training for city employees is increasing by $8,700. There is an increase of almost $860,000 for computer maintenance, $428,000 increase for Microsoft 365 licenses, an increase of $263,000 for Google Cloud services, $150,000 for increase for endpoint asset management, and an additional almost $1.2 million increase for telephone expenses. And on the capital side of the budget, Information Systems Modernization, there's $3 million in Pago for the facilities rewiring for NetPGH and network equipment for NetPGH at 1.9 million dollars, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you Director McDevitt. Thank you Director McDevitt. Now for the department, if you'd introduce yourself, including title, and then let you take it away.
Thank you. Thank you Councilwoman Warwick and Director McDevitt. My name is Heidi Norman. I am the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance. And with me today, on my right, I have Gwen Moore, who is the Assistant Director for Business Technologies, and on my left, I have our Chief Information Security Officer and Assistant Director for Security and Risk, Sylvia Harris. I'm pleased to join you today and to walk you through some of the key accomplishments that my department has realized over the past year and to talk about what we're looking forward to providing to our colleagues in the city as well as our residents across the city. Shall I go ahead?
Yep.
Okay, terrific. So I'm going to separate this into sort of three sections, first talking about what we've done over the past year, and then moving into what our priority focus goals are for next year and how that relates to our budget that is proposed for next year. Within the, what we've accomplished in the current year, I'm going to talk about this within these four different buckets. The Department of Innovation and Performance, as you said, is the IT department, that is primarily what we do, but we also have other areas that will come into play as we, as we walk through this presentation. So within the area of innovation, which covers a wide swath of innovative programming, both internal to the city and with entrepreneurs and researchers and others across the city, the innovation team has accomplished some really great things this year. First is the Pittsburgh Digital Equity Coalition, which was formed by the county executive and the mayor in the fall of 2022, is about to publish a community strategic plan for closing the digital divide in Allegheny County and the city of Pittsburgh. So that's something we've been working very hard on and are super proud of and can't wait to share it with you and with the public very soon. We also have evolved PGH Lab, which is a program, a civic innovation program, where departments and authorities in the city partner with entrepreneurs, local entrepreneurs, to test their products and services for the public market. We are evolving this plan based on feedback we've received over the past eight cohorts of that program to a first customer program, and what that means is, in this first iteration of the new program, we will select up to four companies, and when we select them to go through the program, we will be signing a contract with them and we will be among their first customers. So they will be able to say that they worked with the city of Pittsburgh and that we use their products and services over the course of this project. That's a very exciting innovation and we're really, we're really looking forward to the selection of those new companies for cohort number nine. We had a major technical upgrade in our city channels, control room, and here in council chambers. I think you've all noticed the new microphones, but there's a whole lot more than that that was involved, and not only did they complete this technical upgrade, they did it under budget and far less time than they had anticipated it would take. So that was kudos to that team. And then, sort of in the larger scale, the IMP team has actually completed over 100 technology projects year-to-date. So the team is moving fast on a whole lot of great things. Within Business Technology, which is Assistant Director Moore's area, they have produced a software inventory and roadmap, which depicts the modernization timelines. Over the past five years, the city has really focused on updating all of the software and applications platforms that we use, and I'm happy to say that next year will be the fifth year, and I do believe that there is light at the end of the tunnel, where we have done a yeoman's effort. That timeline actually shows all of the enterprise software and when it either has been updated or will be updated. We will be publishing an open data report and catalog for 2023. This is an exciting development that many departments within the Data Governance Committee have been focused on, and we have updated several significant enterprise applications. Among them, the police record system, which is in the process of rolling out, the municipal pension contribution system, and of course, the HR benefits module. So all city staff are now able to go through open enrollment online. Within Operations Reliability, our first-day tech initiative, and this is an initiative we started at the beginning of the year, where we are trying to make sure that anyone hired into the city who needs technology has a computing device, email and access to their needed network records and files on their first day of work, and we have year-to-date a 95% success rate for that, and the team has plans to push that to 100%, hopefully by the end of the year. We have, over the past year, we reduced the average time to resolve IT help requests by 73% over 2022. We replaced half of the computing devices fleet for our tech refresh program, and we upgraded IT cabling and wiring in half of the facilities to prepare for NetPGH. In Security and Risk, which is Assistant Director Harris's area, we implemented multi-factor authentication for all staff, which makes us all a lot more secure. We better prepared our cybersecurity incident response team by participating in tabletop exercises, and we created more targeted cybersecurity training, particularly for human resources staff, directors and chiefs. Do you have any questions about any of those items? Okay, thank you. Related to some of the accomplishments I was talking about, you can see on this chart, the dark blue is how many service desk tickets were resolved quarter over quarter in 2022, and you can see that over the course of 2022, we radically increased the number of IT help tickets that were being resolved each quarter. The yellow bars are for 2023, so we are now somewhere between 2,500 and 3,000 help desk tickets that come in and are resolved every single quarter. So we are resolving a larger number of tickets over time, while also, on the next slide, showing that we're actually resolving them faster. So again, the blue bars are last year, this is the number of tickets, the percentage of tickets that were closed within three business days, and last year, it was below 50%. Today, over the course of this year, we have increased that to the level that we are closing and resolving 70% of those tickets within three days, while also maintaining an expanded number of tickets, that we're, we're actually solving 2,500 to 3,000 tickets every quarter. So larger number of tickets being solved, and we're solving them faster. So the service desk is really proud of the work that they've done to make sure that the people within, that work for the city are able to get the help they need when IT devices are not functioning properly. Looking forward to what we're going to improve in 2024, I'm going to talk about three main areas again. In innovation, we are hopeful that this coming summer in '24, we will be able to pursue gold certification in the Bloomberg What Works Cities Program. You may not remember, but we actually achieved, as a city, we achieved silver certification, and that is the lowest level of certification in the What Works Cities Program, and it's an indication of how the city is using data in order to make decisions and drive operational excellence. We are hopeful to, as, as the mayor likes to say, silver's fine, but we're the city of black and gold, and gold is where we want to be. So we are hopeful that this year, we are able to turn in an assessment this summer in pursuit of that gold certification. We will also be leading the development of a coordinated citywide digital services strategy. This is sort of, it's a version of smart cities strategy. In the past, the city has been very disjointed in how we've gone about selecting and choosing to implement these types of programs, and we, we decided with several of the directors and the Department of City Planning, that it was high time that we actually coordinate this work together so that we're pursuing the same goals, and it's not as disjointed as it was in the past. We are in the process and will have for next year a policy and standards for the use of generative AI. For, for the listening audience and for any members of council, artificial intelligence and particularly generative artificial intelligence are programs that create content and are in use by many industries, including government, but we have to have very, you know, very workable guidelines and policies to make sure that our, any algorithms that we're using or content that is generated maintains the privacy and security of not only the city's data, but our residents. And finally, we're going to improve the digital experience for our residents with disabilities by applying accessibility standards to all, to our website and all of our web pages to ensure that any of that digital content is more easily seen by people who may have visual impairments. Within Business Technologies, we are going to implement a modern customer relationship management system, and that is the replacement of the system that currently runs our 311 services, and this will also support city council with their constituent engagement. We will be upgrading the website management system itself for improved transparency and public engagement, and we will complete the replacement of outdated custom applications that have been supported by consultants for a long time, and that is something that council has urged us over the years to complete, and we are happy to tell you that 2024 is when we are finally going to be done with that work. On Operations Reliability, we will complete all, all of the IT rewiring efforts in the 115 facilities in which our city employees work, and we will begin to bring the new NetPGH network online. So that's something that council and the mayor have been investing in through our capital budget, as Director McDevitt mentioned earlier, and we're going to be very excited to have our new information highway within, that we use within the city for all of our, for all of our networking services. We will also begin replacing antiquated telephony services, that's telephones, with modern communications technology, moving away from plain old telephone services and with copper wire and desktop phones to a unified communications system. And finally, we will launch an initiative to update all of the departments and bureaus' business continuity plans to address identified cybersecurity risks. Do you have any questions on what we're looking forward to next year?
No, but I'll wait, are there more slides after this?
There are.
Okay, so no.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll wait till then.
I'll keep going. All right, so I want to turn to our budget analysis. You can see here that all three areas where we draw from the budget, operating budget, capital budget, and the Technology Leadership Council IT Project Trust Fund, which is our modernization efforts for our enterprise applications, all of them have been increased for 2024. Let me talk a little bit about what that money is going to do for us. So as Director McDevitt mentioned before, the vast majority of work that our department does is actually on behalf of the other departments and bureaus. So we are, are in service to them, and over the course of this year, we have received just over 11,000 help desk tickets and requests, which are responded to by our 65 staff members on behalf of 24 departments, bureaus and offices. And you can see that sort of the top departments and bureaus that require our assistance. Our operating budget is really consumed by the other departments. As you can see here, it's primarily our public safety and our top operating departments, which take not just the, like, the professional and technical services and the computer maintenance that we provide, but also our staff's time in terms of with the help tickets. So in terms of our operating budget, IMP really only consumes about 4% of our operating budget that isn't allocated to another department. So pretty much everything we do is in service to others. To put in context, this is our capital and operating budget as compared to other departments within the city, and we're about the eighth largest budget when you combine both capital and operating, and it's on par with the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services and Office of Management and Budget. When you look at just our operating expenses and, and think of us as the IT department, this is actually a comparison to show that most IT departments' operating budgets, four city budgets of our size are at 5.3% of the overall city budget. In the case of Pittsburgh, your IT department only takes 3.3%. So to help you understand what that means is, for cities that are about our same size and makeup in terms of budget, we're really small. So we're small, but mighty. We get a lot done for the bits that we get. When we look at our operating budget more closely, it's broken down into these four areas: personnel, professional and technical services, property and other services. So I'm going to go through what each of those are to give you an idea of what types of expenses are contained within them. Our personnel budget takes up 27% of our budget, that is below, about 6% below standard. Most departments have about 1/3 of their operating expenses are for personnel, we do not. Nevertheless, we have, we are actually moving up for the first time, we're getting a new FTE in three years, very excited. So we are, we're actually adding a position into the budget, so that'll be really great for us. And in our professional and technical services, which you can see by far is the largest portion of our budget, it's 45% of the budget, the types of things that we spend that money on are server hosting, cloud storage, software licensing, cybersecurity services, those types of things that are professional and technical services, which is different from, you know, property or computer maintenance type work. Included under other expenses, we actually tend to have one of the largest categories of other expenses in the city, and, but included in there, the reason it's so large is because we pay for the data plans for all city staff, whether those data plans are on their mobile phones or on their computing devices. We pay for those desk phones that we are looking forward to replacing with modern technology, internet services, leasing fiber, the printer leases, all of those types of things. And that's about 19% of our budget coming in, about $4 million. And then in terms of property expenses, this is the smallest part of our overall operating budget at 9%, it's about $2 million. And here we have machinery and equipment that we purchase and lease, we have Wi-Fi access points, the MDT Toughbooks, which is what the police use in their vehicles, and the actual devices, the mobile devices and cellular devices that our city staff use. So that is how our 2024 budget is going to be utilized next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members?
No.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, thanks very much. I think it's interesting, I'm glad that you put up the, the graphic, sort of comparing your budgets to the others and that you're the eighth highest, you know, because we do see a lot of, I think, and maybe it's because you guys are so active, that we see a lot come across the table, so sometimes I know that members are like, oh, it's so, you know, we're spending so much on IT, but you guys are doing so much. You know, and, and of course, it's all in service to the other, to, to the rest of the city. One thing I did want to ask about, just generally, because I know that there were some questions earlier, so with the One Stop PGH, is that the permitting system? We'd spoken at one point about the, so, so, just so I, so the One Stop covers PLI permits, DOMI, does special events in there?
No.
Okay, what, what is in there? So PLI, DOMI?
PLI, DOMI, FIRE.
FIRE.
Who else do we have? Oh, city planning. For the zoning permits.
All right, okay. And have we gotten to a place where we, it would be nice to have all the permits in there, obviously, that, you know, and then what about PWSA? Is that a separate permit, so you just have to go?
PWSA is a separate system.
Okay, okay, and would there ever be a day where we could incorporate? Can you at least connect to the PWSA system?
We do, we have data sharing agreements and have integrations with PWSA, but as a separate entity, we don't share the same system with them.
Okay, and I was just curious just about the, the process within the system. Is it the, I mean, is it more or less uniform, right? Does PLI and DOMI and, you know, FIRE and et cetera, do they have the same process more or less for obtaining a permit?
So in terms of the processes that are used, that's really something that we, I think we should ask Kyle Chintalopoli, the Chief Economic Development Officer, he's responsible for the services and how the, how all the processes run, but my understanding is that the departments are trying to use a uniform system so that it's not custom for each individual department, and it's fairly, fairly uniform and standardized across the departments. My department administers the software, the processes and how it's run is actually administered by the departments.
Okay.
Under Chief Chintalopoli's guidance.
Okay, so when you deploy, I mean, when, when you deployed the system, I mean, did you sit down with everybody and, and, or is this, is this just like an out-of-the-box system?
So what we, the processes and the permits are actually placed into the system by the departments. So when there's a new permit, that comes in, the, the department itself has someone that enters that permit form and process workflow into the system. My department works with the vendor to make sure that the system is being kept updated, and any customizations that the utilizing departments request are, that those customizations are met, so that residents and developers and others who use the system are able to receive better customer service through it. So we're really on the tech side, not so much on the process and which permits are coming in, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, so maybe I should save those questions, because I'm, I've just heard from folks about that particular system, that it's like, you have to, I mean, it would be nice if you could kind of, you have a project and, you know, there's sort of like a prong to, like, you enter your information and then it all goes out to where it needs to go, and everything is kind of happening simultaneously.
And that work is being led by Chief Chintalopoli and by...
There was a point in time when...
You're, you're on mute.
Oh.
You have to speak into the microphone.
There was a point in time originally when we were discussing the One Stop shop, where we would include PWSA, Allegheny County Health Department, as well as the city departments. However, right now, we're only focusing, our application only supports our internal city departments, but the long-term goal is to have it be an actual One Stop shop, including the health department, all of our departments, as well as water, so that way you come in and get all of your permits at one location. That's just not the case at this point.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, just in...
And I think Neil Gerbach in PLI, so I know, I know that you can talk to him as well, I think he and Chief Chintalopoli are working together to kind of provide that oversight and determination of, in terms of the services and the processes, how the phones answered, who, who runs which permits and how those work are being more standardized and streamlined while we're supporting the technical end of it. It's not that they, that they are two completely separate things, because the technical side supports the processes side, but that actually isn't the side that we really have anything to do with.
Okay. Do you know, though, if they're working with any kind of professional, like, process development, I mean, you know, someone who like specializes in processes to, to, to make it all as uniform and streamlined as possible, that then I guess they would come to you to...
It doesn't come to us, that's, I, I'm sorry, I'm not explaining it very well. So let me, let me put it in terms of a word processing, right? We supply Microsoft Word... We supply Microsoft Word and make sure that it's updated. And if there's something that's needed from Microsoft as the vendor, we will work with vendor. What is put into a Microsoft Word document and who that's shared with and how that's created is done by the departments. So it's, we're, we're hosting the technology. The departments that actually issue permits are deciding, under Chief Chintalopoli and Neil Gerbach, how to...
Like where things are routed and where...
Where things are routed, how the processes work, which permits go in, all of those types of things. That doesn't, you know, that is, that is what they have always done.
Do they have the tech expertise?
Yes, they have specific people designated within every department to do this. I mean, it used to be on paper, right? So they didn't send us the paper to process the permit, right?
Yeah.
It's just their permits became digital, right? So they still process and put, create their permits, but just in a digital environment. They don't need to send that to us in order to be able to do their work.
Okay, so, but within the system, they can like construct their own workflows and set their own alerts and do all that stuff. So that's, that's for, for, those are questions for them.
Correct. And if they need assistance, if there's a technical issue, if they can't get in, if their license expires, right, if there's a customization they've decided needs to be had, then they work with us.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
A little bit better, okay.
Yeah.
I know that was confusing, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I understand. I just, I mean, just from a, you know, from a user perspective, right? Like having a, it's great to have a digital system, but it would be even better if it was sort of, if it was all kind of the same, like it all worked more or less the same, at least from the user, I mean, even if there were other things going on behind the scenes.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, I guess I don't, I, I mean, did you want to talk a little bit, just because I always think it's interesting, I mean, it's something we've talked about a lot, but just about the, sort of where we are in the city of Pittsburgh in terms of tech and where you are trying to get us, like when we're talking about the, the net PGH and rewiring the buildings and, and kind of just to give folks an understanding of, like, we're playing catch-up in many areas. And just to kind of give like a before and after view, just for the public to appreciate, like, maybe where we were
Right.
six years ago compared to where we are now. I think it's pretty impressive, everything that you've done, but there's still a lot to do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, so I will try to use analogies and make this simple for everyone who might be listening. So the city was under state financial oversight for a number of years and exited that in 2018. And because we had been in that situation for so long, the answer to can we update and upgrade any of the technology of any kind was generally no, unless it's free or next to free. And so what that meant was in 2018 and 2019, there was a lot of catch-up to do. And so my department actually conducted a large number of assessments. And what we learned is that the underlying technology, let's call it IT infrastructure, because it's very much like roads, bridges, and tunnels, right? It's the, it is the, the means by which the information superhighway that we talk about, that's what makes it go, right? And so this is fiber optics and it's network equipment and it's the wiring in buildings. That was antiquated to the point that even obtaining and trying to implement modern applications, the software that runs on top of that infrastructure was next to impossible because we simply couldn't handle it. The system couldn't handle it. So we began to make plans to create what's now what we're going to call net PGH. And that takes, it literally comes down to physical rewiring, network equipment, and fiber between all of those 115 facilities to be upgraded so that the physical infrastructure, which is our roads, bridges, and tunnels for data and information, can actually handle the second piece, which is our enterprise applications. So previously, departments would buy different types of software, different types of applications, and it wasn't very coordinated. We created in 2018 a Technology Leadership Council and together, all of the department heads and their technical liaisons work together to determine how can we purchase systems that are needed by multiple departments, multiple offices? So we're getting the biggest bang for our buck, right? And really like use those systems to best effect. And so we embarked pretty much from about 2019 forward on concerted efforts to modernize our applications platforms, our software platforms. And that's what that software roadmap that I talked about, a modernization roadmap is all about. I'm really excited to say that next year will be the fifth year and after many years of having so many applications, modernization projects, the requests for that are now just beginning to slow down. So it's been four years of Gwen and her team working their hearts out, but we are seeing tremendous progress and they've just, they've just done a tremendous job with that. And none of it is worth a hill of beans unless Sylvia Harris and the cybersecurity team can help to keep us all secure. And so that was really starting in 2020. It's always been part of Ms. Harris's job, but in 2020, she became the city's Chief Information Security Officer and has really put forth a robust program that we are improving on year over year to do our level best to keep the city, our residents' data and their privacy as secure as we possibly can under challenging and ever-evolving circumstances. So that's what we've been doing. I think I'm really proud of the work that we have done since 2018 and, and we're looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Yeah, the, I do, yeah, that's something that's important to underscore. I mean, we, when you look at the budgets, we spend, you know, public safety is a giant portion, you know, police and fire, and of course, you know, these things are critical. But when we talk about IT, you know, IT security, it's, I mean, the risk factors are huge, right, for, for systems across the city, right? And all those departments, all our public safety departments, right? Like some kind of cyber attack could be devastating for, for everyone. So, you know, that work is, is very important and you do it with a small, incredibly small team, so. And then I guess just one last thing, because I know this is something that I'm kind of, we talk, and it may not necessarily be relevant to the budget in 2024 because we already voted on it, but to talk a little bit about the changes to, to make it easier to maintain our city webpages. Because I know, I mean, even myself, right? Like I'll be looking for something and there's pages and it's like, clearly that's old information and, you know what I mean? And you sort of find yourself kind of just digging through city pages, trying to find the one, like the one, like there should just be one for whatever area. So if you want to talk a little bit about that.
I would love to. So our communication services team, which is led by Smith Welton, really did something pretty tremendous. Again, when we were under that state financial oversight and the answer was, can we please get, you know, a modern system, would always be no. And so he and his team actually developed in-house what's called a content management system. And they did a great job. It was the only way that they could figure out how to do this and, and keep the webpage going. Now, the webpages, quite honestly, they look beautiful and it's due to a massive upgrade that was done a couple of years ago for the look and the feel and to consolidate content and erase duplications, those types of things. However, the system that they programmed is, is really not what is needed for a modern city of today to make sure that our residents are really able to find the information they need and to allow for the mayor's office, the departments, and of course, city council to really be able to communicate well through that digital lens, right, with our residents across the city. And so therefore, we are so pleased to have just purchased, and we will be rolling it out next year, a new content management system that is, I think, is going to make the management and the communication for everyone, including city council, not only easier, but actually just better for everybody. Better for those who are trying to communicate, better for our residents who are trying to find what they need, and, and those of us who are listening and, you know, trying to understand what's happening within city government. I think you're going to like it a lot. I'm really excited for it.
Yeah, I would, I mean, even maybe longer term, I would love to see, it would be nice to have sort of one, even if it means integrations with other systems, to have one app or one webpage that covers all of, so, so for example, not just city, but also where you can get to, you know, transportation, like the, but, you know, that can connect you to PRT relatively seamlessly. So I could just go to like, you know, whatever, cityofpittsburgh.gov and really in that space find anything I needed to do in the city, even if that's not a city function, right? Even if it's a county function or an authority or, or whatever.
Yeah, it is really confusing for folks, right?
Yeah, I mean, housing assistance at the URA, like there's just so many different things, right? And it would be nice to just, even if it's just one, like, front, front page and then you're, you're going off into other, you know? At any rate.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree. It is, it's really hard, I think, for sort of the average resident to understand who and what entity they need to be speaking to depending on the topic.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, so, but yeah, I think that's it. Is there anything else? Any last points?
No, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to say I have, I'd like, I, I love working with this team, you know, from the council perspective.
Thank you.
I love that you're a all-women team in the IT world. As you know, that is rare. So, yeah, great, excellent work and onward.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, here we go. Let me do my thing. Oh, well, I was going to say, yeah, so I guess I don't, I motion myself, I'm the only, yeah.
Welcome, everyone, to the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections for the Budget Hearing. I am Bobby Wilson. I represent District One and I'm also the Land Use Chair of Economic, Land Use and Economic Development Chair, which is city planning and PLI. You will hear that a lot, we will say, PLI, 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 PLI. Permits, Licenses, and Inspections. So this department, the department, we will hear updates from, from this hearing and the, this is not written well, so I'm not going to go off this. All right, so we're going to hear from Peter McDever first on, on, you know, your presentation about the department. I appreciate everything you've put together here and look forward to talking about what's to come in 2024. Thanks.
Okay. The mission of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections is to improve the safety and quality of the life of residents of the city of Pittsburgh through the administration and enforcement of the Pittsburgh Building Code, Zoning Code, and Regulation of Contractor and Trade Licenses and various business licenses as prescribed by the Pittsburgh Business Licensing Code. The department's mission is also to provide a high level of customer service to residents and developers alike as they do business with the department. A quick overview of the department, it is broken into three divisions: the Construction Division, Operations, and Licensing and Administration Division. Position summary, there is a total of 120 full-time positions, which is an increase of 10 total positions. A floodplain administrator, a one-stop-shop PGH customer service manager, two one-stop-shop PGH operations performance analysts, one code training and development supervisor, one code training and development coordinator, one executive assistant, two master code professionals, and one inspector combined electrical. Overall, it's an increase of $659,489 or about 9.6% increase, and those positions are made up both of non-union and ASME 2017. A quick summary of the non-personnel changes from '23 to '24, overall, a $25,000 increase in non-personnel items. There's a $40,000 increase in professional services. $70,000 of that is made up for LEP accessibility, offset by reductions in Exela extension funds. In the capital budget for PLI, there is money for remediation of condemned buildings. There's $2,179,000 in CDBG funds and $750,000 in Pago. And then a quick rundown of the trust funds that PLI has access to. There is the Demolition Trust Fund, which was established in 1982 and last updated in 2017. The expenditures for that are incurred by contractors for the demolition of condemned property. There's also the PLI Records Storage Technology and Operations Trust Fund, which was established in 1986 and last amended in 2018. The expenditures for that are associated with the retention of records, which are submitted to PLI for permit purposes. And lastly, the One-Stop PGH Permitting Technology Trust Fund, which was established in 2021 with expenses associated with the One-Stop PGH permitting platform for ongoing maintenance and enhancements to improve customer and user experience. That's all I have.
Thank you, Peter. I should recognize we're joined by Councilperson Warwick and I'm here. And then, we have anyone online? Thank you. We're also joined by David Green, and I have not met.
Monica Bender.
Monica Bender? All right, nice to meet you. All right, so you have a nice presentation here.
Yep.
And PLI presentations are always great because you get to see that number, you know, of how many inspections were done and, you know, I like it. So, let's check it out.
Okay, before I begin, I'd like to thank Council President Cal Smith and Land Use and Economic Development Committee Chair Councilman Wilson and all council members for giving us the opportunity to talk with you today. Also like to thank Mayor Ganey for creating a strong vision of a safe, welcoming, and thriving Pittsburgh. The mayor's office, including Deputy Mayor Pollak and Chief Economic Development Officer Chintalopoli for their leadership and support. Fellow directors Abrams, Lucas, and Scalakin for their development, and their development teams that have worked with PLI to coordinate and streamline the development process. The PLI leadership team, including Assistant Director of Licensing and Administration, Bender, to my side here, and Assistant Director of Operations, Mary Annie. And lastly but not least, PLI staff for their technical expertise, hard work, and dedication. So a quick overview of the agenda for the public, overview of our mission and organization, overview of the 2024 budget, a preview of the things we look to accomplish in 2024, an overview of what we accomplished in 2023, and some performance data related to all aspects of our department for 2023. So as Director McDever mentioned, we have three units within the department. He also spoke to our mission. And in terms of ensuring safety, each of those units serve different roles. The operation unit ensures that existing buildings and property are safely maintained. The administration and licensing unit ensures that everyday functions of PLI run smoothly through finance and accounting and have direct roles in administrative roles associated with the other two units. And lastly, the construction unit ensures that buildings and structures are safely constructed. In terms of numbers of the 110 current positions in our budget, 102 of those are filled and we are actively working, either recruiting or interviewing for those last eight. In terms of some specifics for each of those units, the operations unit's role includes responding to constituents... responding to constituents' 3-1-1 complaints, enforcing the zoning and preservation codes, and performing license-related inspections. They, this team also performs proactive inspections of fire protection systems, and review buildings and structures for condemnation. And also an important role in remediating condemned properties through city-funded demolitions. For the administration and licensing unit, the, serve as intaking applications, both for PLI and zoning, and in administrating businesses and licenses. As mentioned previously, perform all finance and accounting for PLI, and have customer service functions, including answering general inquiries and community engagement. Also maintain our records and lead technology improvements. New positions on the org chart are in, highlighted in red, and these will help to improve overall management and service, and allow Assistant Director Bender to dedicate more time to organizational needs. She'll speak more to specifics of those roles later. For the construction unit, this team reviews permit applications and inspects construction and occupancy of buildings and structures, responds to 3-1-1 complaints, and then shares the responsibility of enforcing zoning preservation codes with the operations unit. These new positions will add capacity and expertise to the unit. For the benefit of the public, PLI's regulation of construction is generally limited from the lot lines in, so we do not generally regulate work in the right-of-way. That is generally the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. There is some overlap. And then, within a building, we do not regulate plumbing systems generally. That is the authority of the Allegheny County Health Department's Plumbing Division. Excuse me. In terms of the 2024 budget, highlighting that the personnel budget is funded by permit revenue, and under the new proposed fee schedule, we are adjusting the permit fees. In 2023, we found the proportion of permits with a value of construction equal to the minimum fee increased significantly. So we are proposing to raise the minimum fee to ensure we can cover our operating costs. To balance this increase, we are simultaneously lowering the rate per thousand dollars of construction. While not shown on this slide, we are also proposing to adjust some of our optional service fees. This includes modifying the pre-application plan review meeting fee to a flat-tiered fee based on value of construction, a separate accelerated review for commercial building permits in anticipation of expanding the service, and a adjustment to the commercial overtime inspection fee. Now, I'll hand it over to Assistant Director Monica Bender.
Excuse me. Thank you, Director. Earlier this week, the Honorable Mayor Ganey gave his budget address and spoke of achieving his vision of a city for all through safe, welcoming, and thriving initiatives. PLI's budget looks to meet the administration's vision, and as Director Green previously mentioned, PLI's mission is to ensure safety in the built environment. PLI is proposing, are proposed four additional positions for improved safety. The first one is the floodplain administrator. This work is currently performed by the zoning administrator. So we're looking to add this role to allow for increased expertise and focused management, increase community resilience with increased hazards, and then also the expectation that the flood insurance for city residents would decrease. In addition, we're looking to, we've proposed the addition of one electrical inspector. Currently, permit holders for commercial electrical permits must hire third-party agencies or TPAs to perform electrical inspections. Adding this position allows for PLI to eliminate the TPA requirements for commercial electrical inspections and perform those in-house, reducing the financial burden to commercial customers, and improving the efficiency of the permit process. And just as a note, PLI issued over 1,000 commercial electrical permits from July of 2022 to June of 2023. So that's a significant volume in commercial permits. Also, this role has been historically difficult to fill, so looking to add additional staff to improve redundancy and, and meet permit needs. We also have two plans examiners. Currently, our, we're meeting our standard service-level agreements for review times. But adding these additional positions allows the enhancement of service-level agreements to include some proposed progressive SLAs for revisions, an expansion of the highly successful accelerated review program to include building permits, some building permits, and additional capacity for preliminary meetings. PLI's operations also seek inclusive, transparent, and consistent services to all stakeholders. And so, we've proposed six additional positions for a welcoming and thriving city. These two positions, or two positions include the Performance Operations Analyst. PLI is meeting the city's data governance requirement through data reporting. However, adding these positions will allow for PLI's enhancements to the One-Stop Pittsburgh system, to continue to support the system's operations supervisor and development, inform management on more data collected to increase efficiency, and also to continue to improve transparency of services and performance-related data. We also have the One-Stop Customer Service Manager. Currently, the application staff and services remain online. PLI recognizes the need for services to be available, both online and in person, and look forward to opening the One-Stop Pittsburgh Counter at 412 Boulevard of the Allies next year. Application staff are responsible for processing high volumes of applications every day. Adding this role will continue to foster inter-agency coordination for the One-Stop Pittsburgh Counter, and ensure customer service excellence across all service platforms. We have the Executive Assistant, and that is to assist with the PLI directors. PLI collaborates frequently with internal and external stakeholders. This role will allow for PLI directors to increase productivity and collaboration, and aim to remove bottlenecks to improve customer service. And then we have the sought-after Training and Development Supervisor and Training and Development Coordinator roles. And just for, just for reference, 89% of PLI positions require the attainment and maintenance of certifications to perform their work within the city. And over the 2023 calendar year, PLI staff acquired 115 certifications and completed over 650 continuing education hours. These roles come highly recommended from all staff to allow for increased staff development and expertise, support to meet PL, PA labor and industry requirements for certification and continuing education, and will enable supervisors to focus on operational issues and improve customer service. Due to the required certifications of these roles, the investment in each employee is considerable. The training positions will improve our return on investment and potentially reduce overall costs. PLI's capital budget also supports the vision of a safe city. Our capital funds, our, our capital funds are used to complete our demolitions, and the anticipated number of standard demolitions is based on an average cost for those demolitions, which include lead and asbestos fatement and the demolition of the structure. So looking at the monies that were allocated for 2024, we anticipate approximately 45 to 50 standard demolitions. All city-funded demolitions are directed by PLI to ensure our public, our public health, safety, and welfare. Emerged demolitions are associated with major catastrophic events where there is imminent danger and immediate remediation is necessary to protect the public. And that is, that, we use our Pago for the emergency demolitions, and then our CDBG funds for planned projected, or project demolitions. At this moment, I want to take some time to highlight the 2024 goals for PLI. So, to continue inter-agency collaboration and improvement through our One-Stop enhancements, we, we are looking to, I'm sorry, we look to continue our inter-agency collaboration and improvements through the One-Stop Pittsburgh enhancements to reduce silos in our agency services. So we're working on user interface enhancement, cross-agency improvements, and, and coordination. PLI also is looking to inspect commercial electrical permits, launch a residential inspection unit and remote virtual inspections, expand accelerated review services, launch our rental registration, adopt the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, launch a fire and life safety registry, achieve the highly sought-after international accreditation for building department, for building departments, and then, again, meeting our inter-agency coordination by opening up our One-Stop Pittsburgh customer counter in 412 Boulevard of the Allies. Also would like to demonstrate how the budget from last year impacted the operations of PLI. And just going to touch upon a couple things. So the Systems Operations Supervisor, which was a transition from a previous role, was very important to the development enhancement of the city's One-Stop Pittsburgh system, and as you heard earlier, is led by our Chief Chintalopoly in partnership with our staff and other agency staff. We have seen improvements to development, agency application, and cross-agency support, and look forward to major interface improvements in 2024, like accessibility.
Just to interject, the user interface is being developed primarily in-house and led by the Systems Operations Supervisor. So a real, real increase in our ability to improve our services without relying on the vendor to do so. So this role has been tremendously impactful, not only for PLI, but for our sister agencies, DCP and DOMI, and for residents who have to be involved in the development process.
The other highlight I'd like to make is the, is for the code inspector roles. We, last year, we transitioned the process of evaluating condemnations, and we adopted a new evaluation system, leading to the reevaluation of over 1,600 condemned properties, and providing transparent data through launching of Engage Pittsburgh. Two more highlights. We added two additional permitting supervisors last year, and this has continual impacts on cross-agency coordination and efforts to streamline the permitting process. These roles have contributed to expanding PLI's accelerated plan review services, launching the pre-application plan review meetings, and the new floodplain permit, and also enhancing customer service. The last highlight is the Residential Construction and Stormwater Construction Inspector role. These are two new specialty roles in PLI as of last year. These roles have been filled, and we aim to improve customer service overall with these new roles. My final highlight regarding capital budget accomplishments. These funds increase their impact of demolitions in the city and improve overall safety. For instance, the Homewood Initiative ensures students have a safe route to school by remediating condemned buildings to remove those hazards. PLI partnered with DOMI to replace and/or repair sidewalks on those same routes. We're partnering to do that. In addition, a fair amount of work was performed in the north side in the Homewood area in 2023. PLI looks to identify priorities with council for 2024 for an equitable impact on city neighborhoods. And I'll turn it back over to Director Green for PLI services and performance data. Thank you.
So first, highlight construction-related performance data. So, this slide shows the number of issued permits each year from 2017 through 2023. The 2023 is a projection based on data through the end of October of this year. And as a note, the permits issued as of the end of October is on par with our volume from 2021. So it looks like we may be returning to pre-pandemic levels of development, which is encouraging not only for my department, but the city's ability to thrive overall. In terms of the value of construction, we have seen a spike in the value of construction this year to date. Pretty considerable. We haven't had an ability, a timeframe to dig into these numbers, just to look at what may have caused them. Some potential are general increases in the cost of materials and labor. It's also potential that there is a higher proportion of larger-scale developments, which are considerably more expensive than standard renovation. So there may be more new construction versus renovations, potentially. And then like to highlight some work of each of the units within the department. So this slide shows performance data for the construction unit. And just some explanation of lingo for the public, SLA is a service-level agreement, and this is the timeframe that we agree to respond to an action by a customer. And highlighting the numbers here, we have generally reviewed applications between 30 and 50% faster than published. We publish our timeframes on our webpage, and then through the One-Stop PGH portal, customers can see a due date for when our reviews are to be performed. And then also highlighting that this unit performed over 16,000 reviews during the period of, from the beginning of November of last year and the end of October of this year. And also highlighting the number of accelerated reviews, which has grown to 412, up from 266 during the same comparable period in 2022. And also, a tremendous amount of work on the inspection side, approximately 40,000 Excuse me. In terms of the administrative unit, the PLA aptecs check PLI permits and licenses, and the Department of City Planning's applications to ensure that all required types of documentation have been provided. And you can see the numbers here, almost 31,500 applications checked for completeness by this portion of the administrative unit. Not shown on the slide, other work that this unit does includes regularly sending out compliance notices, and the volume of that is roughly 1,200 requests for compliance weekly. And this ensures that defendants receive proper legal notice of the violations. And then this unit also responded to over 500 write-to-know requests in 2022. Not much work. And then, in terms of the operations unit, like to highlight the total number of inspections, just over 58,000. And then, in terms of the complaints that come in through 3-1-1, just shy of 60%, we find violations. just shy of 60%, we find violations. And noting reasons why we may not find violations is that we do need to respect people's right to privacy and follow our right to entry to a property. So we are restricted to generally what we can see from the public right-of-way or on the path to the entrance to the house or facility unless someone grants us access. Once we do find a violation, approximately 65% of those cases are abated prior to us issuing a criminal complaint. And then those that, beyond that, an additional 29% are abated prior to us actually, after we issue the criminal complaint. And then Monica spoke to this, but in terms of reevaluating condemned buildings, this slide shows the proportion for each score, one being the least hazardous and four being the most. And as you can see, approximately 12% are fallen to the higher end of the spectrum. And then the slide also provides a link for the Engage PGH site for demolition so that the public can find these scores and then provide feedback in terms of what outcomes they would like to see for these condemned properties. That varies by neighborhood. Some neighborhoods would like for PLI to initiate city-funded demolition of the structure to remediate the hazards. Others would look for those buildings to be rehabilitated and returned to productive use. And then some generalized or map-based info. So this map shows the primary case file type for each neighborhood. The blue or teal colors represents areas where the primary violation is building maintenance. Purple represents construction areas, or areas with construction permit violations. Green, vacant building violations, i.e. where we are condemning a building. And then a unique neighborhood where there were no violations. Or indeterminate, I should say, primary violations. And then a number of condemned buildings. This is a heat map that identifies the number of condemned buildings in each neighborhood, with yellow being zero to six. And at the other end of the spectrum, 54 to 82 buildings per neighborhood in the darkest red. And just briefly speaking to what condemnation means, this is a sliding scale. Building can be condemned for various reasons, and this can range from a building not being provided with water or electrical service to a partial collapse on the under end of the spectrum. Sorry. And then last slide, a map of the city-funded demos and numbers of demos completed in each neighborhood. And total number of demos during this period completed was 142. So thank you for your time. Hopefully, we weren't too long-winded.
No, you're good. Appreciate all the data. We're also joined by Councilman Gross, and then I'll turn it over to members. We'll start with Councilman Ward.
Thank you. Thanks for being here and for all your hard work. I guess I'll start, well, I'll start by asking about the rental registry, just in terms of your personnel. So this is going to be a big undertaking. Do you feel like you have the staff to, you know, make this happen? Or what's your outlook on how this will roll out, given the staff that you have?
We do feel we have enough staff. As I mentioned at the hearing, standing committee hearing related to that legislation, one of the timing pieces related to when the program will become effective is transitioning our enforcement of weeds and debris to sister-agency Department of Public Works Environmental Services. And our teams have been working together, had some discussions with Director Hornstein, and we are meeting in a couple of weeks to review that schedule and timeframe, make sure we're all on the same page related to that. We do also need to perform some administrative tasks and training of staff. But in terms of staff capacity, the volume related to weeds and debris and the volume anticipated with rental registration, we're comfortable that we have appropriate capacity.
And for the rental registration, what's your plan for the initial rollout? I mean, are you going to look at, for example, you know, I know that, well, I'm sure in my district, I'm sure throughout the city, there's sort of known large, you know, whether it's a company or a particular landlord that has numerous buildings with issues. I mean, do you know who those players are? Will you sort of let them come to you, let them register? Are you going to go out and actually actively, I mean, for the ones that you know about? Are you going to actively?
We do anticipate trying to perform outreach to individuals who the legislation will apply to, to make them aware of the permit program process and requirements, and would look to support from the mayor's office as well as council in terms of that engagement process and that messaging. But really look to raise awareness first and have a period of time, provide a period of time for people to go through the registration process before we start enforcement, if that's the nature of your question. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's what I meant. So if there's, you know, a property management company or landlord who has known sort of buildings that are issues, yeah.
We would provide them notification of the program, but we are anticipating that enforcement related to the new legislation would not be immediate because people will need time to prepare what they need for the application. So and also, you know, it's not like flipping a switch for folks. So do want to be reasonable, but do hold people accountable as well.
And how is that going to work for buildings? Because I mean, I know there's a few just that I can think of off the top where I'm, you know, the buildings are in pretty poor condition and perhaps would be buildings that shouldn't even have people living in them, but they are. So what is the process for, because we obviously don't want folks, I mean renters, getting tossed out due to the rental registry. So what's going to be the process there?
So the program requires registration and then an inspection. And the inspection would assess the proper maintenance of the building per the International Property Maintenance Code standards, anticipating that generally a failed inspection just means you're not getting your non-provisional permit that authorizes legal use as a rental unit. And that unless there are serious life safety issues, we're not taking actions that would remove people from rental units. So similar to outside of the program, we're not ordering vacating a building unless there is immediate life safety issues where it's not safe to live. We may run into those issues, but by and large, the purpose is to say, does it meet the standard? And if you don't, it's, you have a failed inspection report identifying what you need to fix, and you don't get your permit that makes it legal for you to operate that rental unit.
Okay, okay. And then just so in terms of, so environmental services will be taking over weeds and debris. With that in mind, you know, there's been some legislation floated, I know, oh, but that Councilman-elect Sharland will probably be putting forward next year just sort of like a ticketing system for violations as a step one before it goes to the magistrate. Do you have any thoughts about that? Would that be something that would impact PLI as well, or will that?
It would depend on the nature of the legislation.
I guess my question is, would that make your life easier if something of that, like that, were in place?
I haven't seen what's proposed, so not sure the direct impact. I would say while the code enforcement process can, is not necessarily understood by everyone, the requests for compliance are effective in getting most individuals to address violations. And my experience with the department in prior roles was that softer approaches that didn't follow a standard process timeframe and steps were not as effective. So previous attempts to, say, leave a business card at a location, say, please call me to discuss this, not effective. And think that people need to be aware of legal implications. But our general approach as a department has been to say, our responsibility is to let you know if there's a violation. We're not looking for the financial penalties that we can ask a magistrate to assess. We want compliance, and we do want to work with you so that you understand what the violation is and how to remediate it. But it's really important, and one of the basic premises of the codes that we enforce is that we provide notice so they know their legal rights and what they violated. And that allows them due process so they can appeal, if they want to, to our either LIR Board, License and Inspection Review Board, depending on the nature of the violation, or our Board of Appeals, prior to going to the magistrate.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, that's good to know. And then I wanted to ask, so with the agency counter system, I know that from my office, is there any possibility of, because I know that inspectors are often at the magistrate. I've been to a few hearings at the magistrate and the inspectors, the PLI inspectors there is, you know, providing the evidence and whatnot. Is it possible to start entering information, you know, sort of the outcome of those hearings in agency counters so that folks can see them, so that we can see them?
Yeah, I believe that started actually, but it's more recent. So we are now identifying basic information about our hearings and then an outcome. So we did hear that input and feedback, and we have acted on it.
Oh, great.
Correct.
Oh, great. So, I mean, I understand it takes time. You got to work through all the items. But so like if there's a hearing date, I mean, that stuff would just be very helpful because we find ourselves calling the magistrate, or I mean, my office, we find ourselves calling the magistrate, finding out when the hearing is, calling the constituent back, letting them know when the hearing is, you know.
So I'm not sure, I don't want to misspeak. I, we are identifying outcome of a hearing. We are identifying when a hearing has been scheduled. I don't know that we are exposing the actual date of hearing and other info. We are working on that, but the basics of where the violation is in process, whether we're performing an investigation or whether it has moved to the court process. And then if there has been a court hearing, we do identify the outcome of that hearing currently.
Okay, okay, great. Oh, and then also for this, for the positions for fire and life safety. So when we had a briefing with the Fire Bureau, and they were also asking for a position or positions for fire inspectors, is this, is there overlap between these two?
No, not tremendous overlap. There are similar standards. These positions are focused on ensuring that buildings with life safety systems have proper maintenance records. And those positions that were approved under last year's budgets are predicated on us launching a fire inspection registry to provide revenue related to that. Those are the positions you're inquiring about, right? Or am I misunderstanding?
No, that's, yeah.
Yeah. So we currently have some of those, a couple of those positions. And the Fire Bureau's fire inspections, I think, are more complaint-based, but I could be wrong and more, and slightly different. And they do citations for overcrowding and other issues under the fire code. Not that there isn't some overlap, but have tried to keep the roles as clear as possible between the two.
So when you say a fire safety registry, will that be part of the, well, I guess, so that would be for every building, not just rentals? Would that be tied into the rental registry for rentals?
No, it would be a separate program entirely. So rental registration would be limited to those buildings that have rental units per the legislation. The Fire and Life Safety Registry, I believe, would require legislation for us, similar to the rental registration, and would need to define which buildings it would apply to, the, how the program, basics of the program, is it a permit you apply for? How do we, how does, what does people have to submit? What is our inspection program, et cetera? So there are a few steps to get there to support that expansion of our unit currently. Two people, I believe, if I'm correct. So right now, they're doing the best they can, but that's a lot of work for two people, for the whole city.
Yeah, I guess what I meant is that, so if, if we're doing, I mean, if a building owner is registering as a rental, if they can, I mean, just in terms of the process, if they could also then, as part, I mean, I understand we have two separate registers, but if it would be one registration process, I mean, just to sort of simplify for the user.
That is something we can consider when we get there. I think.
And then like one inspection that would cover the whole thing rather than having to do two separate one?
I think appropriate to think through those things. And with you entirely about trying to minimize the interaction points and to make it a clearer process for individuals where both those programs might apply to them.
Okay. Yeah, and then just as far as demolition, so I mean, my understanding of demolitions is that we're really only demolishing the things that are in actual danger to, I mean, like a physical danger, whether that be to people walking down the street or the building next door or something like that. Is that accurate?
Yes. So as Director Bender indicated during the presentation, anytime we're performing a city-funded demolition, we're directing it to preserve public health and safety. And the only difference in the types of demolitions we perform are in the types of funding we use and the process associated with that. And based on the type of funding, we're using that funding based on the level of hazard to the public. So CDBG funding has a process to go through that can take several months. So that doesn't work if the building's collapsed into the street. So unfortunately, the city has a pretty large population of buildings with deferred maintenance and various degrees of deterioration. The 1,600 approximate condemned buildings, all of them are not at that scale. But if we're But if we're initiating a city-funded demolition, it's not just because there's some loose siding. By and large, there is some form of serious structural issue, if not a partial collapse.
And you may not have the answer to this, but since, you know, we've talked a lot about the land bank and city properties and transport, does the land bank have funding for demolitions that we could take advantage of?
I do not, no, I cannot answer that, sorry.
We can, we can ask that somewhere else. So, it would be helpful, I mean, I was looking at your map, which is very helpful. So, there's obviously, I have a lot of, lot of properties in bad shape in my district, as I'm sure most council members do. It would be helpful to, if someone on your staff has the time to kind of sit down and go through what the worst, I mean, the ones that you are aware of, the ones, because, you know, we do kind of, I mean, I feel like, maybe it's just because I'm new, but I feel like I'm sort of constantly fielding calls, like, oh, this one, oh, that one. And it's like, you know, kind of like whack-a-mole on which.
Sure.
But it would be helpful to sort of sit down with you because you have the expertise and sort of the, to say, look, these are the ones that we have our eye on. And just sort of a rough kind of plan that'll help us, you know, when we're dealing with the residents and getting the calls and whatnot.
I think certainly not the same thing as talking directly with us. But the EngagePGH website does record our programmatic inspections. So, we're going on a periodic basis to condemn properties, to reassess, and comparing the previous inspection and previous photographs. And the frequency that we're performing those programmatic inspections is tied to the score. So, one is going to be re-inspected at a less frequent basis than a four. So, that gives a rough guide. And EngagePGH is pretty slick in terms of showing locations and having access to that information. But absolutely happy to have those conversations additionally, but highlighting to the public as well that that is a useful tool to look at. I find myself using it, similar to agency counter, that people may think trying to defer people. But really, those tools are pretty powerful, particularly in map-based tools, to find information and locations where you may have kind of limited information as well as accessible 24 hours a day.
Okay, and then just to move a little over to building permits. So, there's the, there's the online portal. And then, and you, we are going to have more, well, we are going to have someone you can call, right? Like, so if you have the start of a project, there will be a number that, where someone picks up the phone?
We already do that. So, during standard business hours, and I don't want to say what misrepresent, month? Eight to three, every day, PLI, aptechs are manning those phones and answering during periods of large volume. It may go to voicemail, but we are returning those. And there was a slide in the presentation talking about the number of phone calls that they're responding to. Also, not, another resource that is available is there's a chat feature during the same timeframes on the online portal. It's a little green box at the bottom right-hand corner of the portal page. When it's staff, it says, "We're here," and a little green thing. And click on it. Also, if you're on the page first, like any other chat feature, for a significant period of time, it pops up and say, "Do you need help?" Again, I'd say those are generally useful. We are looking forward to getting into 412 and recognizing that those resources don't work for everybody.
And as far as permitting, just because I asked this before with IMP, but just with the process, you know, there's, there's PLI and there's Domi and, you know, the... How uniform is the process for the different parts of what you, of the different permitting that you need for new, you know, for new, whether it's new construction or something you're doing on your house?
So, we, we all worked together. All the PLI, DCP, Domi, Fire Bureau at the launch of the one-stop PGH Portal System. If I'm remembering correctly, late May of 2019 was when zoning in PLI went live and then a few months later, Domi. So, we were all collectively involved with the vendor in terms of determining which out-of-the-box features we would use and the level of customization. And did our best to coordinate beforehand, understanding that until you use a system, it's pretty difficult to understand how it will work. And I think pretty quickly realized that it couldn't step forward. But we needed to work on coordinating those efforts more. And there's been considerable work since then. And Chief Chindolopoly has been pushing that further. And we have, at various levels, regular coordination meetings between three agencies. And the mayor alluded to looking to highlight significant change, hopefully, in sometime early-ish next year, improvement to that inter-agency coordination and a more streamlined permit process. So, fully acknowledge, currently, it is not as coordinated and uniform as it should be. We are looking to align those processes and make sure there's more uniformity and some considerable time leadership level, ensuring that we're looking at that standards and those processes so that we can achieve that. Because at the end of the day, residents, quite frankly, don't care if they need a PLI permit, a Domi permit, or DCP. It's a permit from the city. They want to build a deck. They want to open a business. So, we're looking to revamp that process, to remove the requirement to understand what type of permit you need to apply for and, and what agency review you need to. So, looking to use the tools that have been set up in the system. And that effort has also been led very strongly by Neil Gerbach, the system operations, sorry, I forget supervisor. Bad with titles. But a lot of work and effort on that front. And having both leadership in the mayor's office and then someone with technical expertise to coordinate that has really been helpful prior to that position. Each department independently tried to improve their portion of the one-stop system, and there would not be uniformity. So, this allows there to be oversight, start to talk about standards and ensure that we're also coordinating our efforts with the vendor. The vendor still needs to have some role in it to ensure that whatever we build doesn't break the system. So, it's not completely without their input. And then the two operations system analysts that are in this budget will also help tremendously. So, Neil's done a lot of great work. The user interface, not just him, but he's led along with colleagues in DCP and Domi, their comparables have helped and not used the vendor for most of it. So, that's tremendous that we as a city can do that and make those type of improvements. You know, it will include language translation on every page so that we can have people access the information immediately instead of trying to use Google Translate or other services. And then also working on this project to make a big step forward in the permitting process.
Yeah, so that's, that's good to hear. And also, just in the, I mean, again, from, and I never know if this is just people sort of exaggerating, but I think sometimes there is a feeling of you go in and, you know, you wait for this, 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 and then, oh, now you're at the back of the line with Domi. Like, is there also going to be a priority process where it's like, okay, if I'm in it, right? Like, I'm building my thing and it's basically getting there almost done. Like, I, it's not like this, I'm not like over here with PLI and then here and then now I'm back down here with Domi because there was, you see what I mean? Where we're kind of like moving ahead in the priority in all the areas just to kind of get, get to the finish line.
Sure. So, we are looking with this improvement to also coordinate our reviews so that it's, right now, not that coordinated. And people do get ping-pong between agencies and we recognize that and are doing our best to manage that in the current system and trying to do that on a person-to-person basis. The permitting supervisors have helped to make those connections to other agencies and try to ensure that people don't get lost in red tape limbo. So, hopefully, one intent with the improvement is that you don't get halfway through the process and realize you need to be submitting to another agency. So, the intent is that, early in the process, any agency that needs to review the development, reviews it. We all look at the same information. We coordinate reviews. And that we have similar timeframes and/or coordinated reviews and hopefully are able to also institute progressive reviews, SLAs, so that if you need additional revisions or reviews, that each subsequent timeframe is a little shorter. But do intend to generally rely on the overall system of first in and first out based on that due date to be equitable. So, it's not really the end of the line. It's just going back into the line based on your SLA. Although people think it's going to the end of the list. It's just going back in. And you'll be reviewed based on when you resubmit it, if that makes sense.
Oh, so you're saying, you're saying if, if this review, we have five days to do it, then you're going back.
Well.
As opposed to you're not going before someone else who submitted something?
You may. What I'm saying is there's, there's still a queue. And the, that timeframe would be based on when someone submitted. And then also, is this your first revision versus your second or your third, et cetera? If that makes sense. So, for example, absolutely not based on anything. But say the initial review is 30 days. We require a vision that the, when they resubmit revision, we review within 15 business days, no later. And then if they need another one, seven, five, et cetera. But that, we're not reviewing it immediately when you resubmit. We're assigning reviews based on total population
Right.
of things that have been submitted based on those timeframes.
Sure, sure.
So, I think some people.
Maybe that's what, yeah.
Miscommunication that people think it's in order based on when you submit. It's, it's based on when you resubmit and the timeframe.
Yeah.
But understand, it can also be frustrating and the process is not as transparent and predictable as it can be. And as I mentioned at the beginning, really appreciate the efforts of Director Lucas Abrams and Scalakin and their team in working with PLI on this front and under Chief Chindolopoly's leadership. So, I would expect that hopefully everyone is very pleasantly surprised in 2024. And, I mean, everyone's always going to want it faster. But hopefully, it will be a much more streamlined and transparent and easy-to-navigate process.
Okay, and then my last question is, I don't know if you're, but sort of, at the moment, sort of out in the world, zoning is kind of the hot topic, right? Everybody's like, oh, you can't build anything in Pittsburgh because of the zoning, right? But in the cases where I've talked to folks who are actually building stuff, of course, the issue, you know, the issues that they're dealing with tend to be permitting, right? So, you know, all these changes to the zoning code are kind of coming up and, and city planning is, is looking at this code and the various council offices are looking at things in the code that we could change to kind of modernize it and take, you know, just sort of, cut some of the red tape. Are there, is there any similar effort in PLI? Or are there areas where you think, you know, like, maybe the, I don't know, you know, maybe we don't need to look at windows the way we used to or we don't need to look at this or that the way we used to because of new material? I mean, I'm just off the top of my head. Is there, is there any way to kind of look at doing that to just sort of streamline the process? I mean, I understand you gotta look at the electrical. You gotta look at, but...
Sure. I would say, as a department, we're continually looking at those things to review our processes and ensure that they're as efficient as they can be and that the steps are, any steps that we're taking are necessary. I would say it's slightly different than the zoning regulations, particularly on the construction side. We have limitations on the manner in which we can change the legislation because it is regulated by state law. And there is a process to amend that legislation and a requirement that, or a limitation that we can't make changes to that state law unless it is equal or more restrictive. So, we can't, you know, if there's a provision in the state law that we don't agree with, we can't simply say we can get away with that. We have to enforce that provision. But we do continually look to make the process more streamlined. One of the things you may not be aware of in our current process, we have a permit type that is referred to as a minor alteration. Probably not the best or clearest language, but the intent there is that it doesn't require review and our enforcement is limited to inspection. So, applicants apply. They identify this work type. That permit could be issued in a single day potentially, as long as there's a valid license holder. There may, it may take a couple of days because of processing between their submission and our staff action. But there is a significant volume of the permits that we issue that don't have to go through plan review and our enforcement is limited to those field inspections. So, a high percentage of the residential permits are that and a very significant portion of the commercial permits. So, and that's been part of our process initially, started, I think, in 2016 and really formalized when we launched the one-stop system in 2019. Probably something, again, not the clearest language. Other municipalities have adopted other language for things like EZPermit or... So, I think the, the language probably may have inhibited or created misunderstanding for folks. So, we do look for those ways of ensuring that we perform our role to make sure the building is constructed or renovated safely, but only taking the steps that are necessary to ensure compliance, if that makes sense.
Yep. Okay, that's it for me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Councilwoman Gross?
Appreciate it. Do we have any council members online or is it just the two of us?
Peter's supposed to.
Okay, great.
Peter's keeping track of that.
Just, yeah, yeah. But so I'll just pick up right where Councilwoman Warwick left off, I think. And I appreciate your questions as well. I was taking notes. On this kind of minor alterations permits, which we could call expedited permitting, kind of, right? So, because there's no plan review, which is nice. And that there's only final inspections. And that there's only final inspections. I can't really tell how many of those permits that are issued per year are there. But I'm imagining it's a lot, right? So when you're talking about like the 5,618 residential permits, you know, a lot of that's going to be like. I'm having the electrical replaced in my hundred and ten-year-old house, like I had to do a year ago, right? And so there's no plan review for that. And, but there was definitely an inspection, right? Because we want to make sure that that's work, it's definitely being done by a licensed contractor. You do the licensing for the contractors. So that we make sure that they're doing, you know, almost kind of they're up to your standards, right? So we have, that's why we have licensing of professionals in addition to the specific plan permits. And permits for the exact work. Yes, in general?
Yeah, I would say the license is ensuring that the, for the electrical and fire suppression. That they have the technical expertise to perform the work.
Right.
And that they've made it, met an independent standard confirming that they understand how to perform that work. So that, that goes a long way to making our role as inspectors easier. Because if they understand the code and those technical requirements, there's a larger chance that they install it properly. And the inspection passes, so.
Right, but also it's safer for the public, right? We don't want people who are not skilled in these kinds of things, like especially electrical systems.
Yep.
They were doing shoddy work, they can end up in tragedy, right? So we appreciate, we appreciate that, but I just want people to understand that there's a large part of those permits that are these kinds of minor alterations.
Yeah, and on the residential end of our residential permits, almost, well, all mechanical permits. For residential properties do not require plan review. So all of those can be issued essentially same day, virtually same day. And probably ninety-nine percent of electrical, there is one caveat, which is pretty rare. Where we would require a, a plan review for the electrical. So pretty much a hundred percent mechanical and electrical are expedited permits essentially. And then one of the things probably should have mentioned and realizing this in retrospect as we're talking. We also instituted a change relatively recently, and I can't remember the date. But we have changed the minor alterations for mechanical and electrical permits. So that homeowners can self-perform that work. So obviously, we're restricting the nature of what people can perform under that. Because they're not, electricians are mechanical contractors. But reducing the barrier to entry so that there can be limited work performed by homeowner. And we can perform those inspections. So, and this could hopefully also improve compliance. Because quite frankly, someone has to hire a general mechanical contractor, electrician for some of those things. They're not likely to do so and not likely to get a permit. So thank you for highlighting that. And on the building side, a fair proportion as well, most renovations would. Not require review, generally it'd be additions, some decks. And then if there's a significant renovation where there's structural work. So by and large, there's a huge volume of residential permits. That really are primarily inspection. And the. The sole review may be on the zoning side.
Thank you, appreciate that. It leads me into another question, so which I had at the table before, so I hope you're ready for it. Because it was just a few weeks ago when we were here, maybe it was a few months ago, I can't keep track of time. But you were, you were here as the interim director. And so outside of those, like homeowner or small-scale permits under residential. Or maybe I should ask, you have a chart, it's on the 2023 performance data under construction. There's a commercial line that says there were 10,846 and a residential line that says there's 5,618 in 2023. If, if the, the 500-unit apartment building that was built in my district, is that listed here under commercial or residential permit?
Commercial, so for a quick rule of thumb, there are some exceptions. But generally speaking, residential is where the building has a maximum of two dwelling units.
Okay, this is really important, I'm going to stick with this for a minute.
Yeah.
Two dwelling units, and so that's the 5,618.
Yep.
And then, so the commercial permits at 10,846 are larger than that, anywhere from two to 500 is the biggest I know of that was.
Yeah, three to, three to 500.
Yeah, so, and this is where I got to the question that we've talked about before. But I just want to emphasize, because along with this zoning debate, and I'm really thinking about some, some voices in the public discussion now. I've been going back and forth with on email and, and I see them kind of on social media claiming that, you know. For example, last year in the city of Pittsburgh, there were only like a couple hundred permits. And I've said like, that is really bad information and stop saying that, right? Because again, if I had one, one building open at 500 units, right? They're counting that as one permit. And it's really misrepresentation to say that the city of Pittsburgh's permitting is so bad. That only a few hundred kind of dwellings are being built. And it's really a misrepresentation. And so I said to you, how can you give us the count? And I, even when Director Kinter was here last year, I sent her the email and said like, give me the exact count of like occupancy of newly constructed units. And the last time we talked about that, you were like, we're not actually capturing that in.
Well.
Our database, and I said, oh, could you please start?
So to clarify, we, what we are collecting is newly constructed units. So what we're not tracking is when it's a conversion. So if you took, say, a warehouse and created apartments, we are not currently tracking.
Well, and some of that's huge, like some of that has really been like, you know, there's been many hundreds of those even, you know, specifically. So can we start doing that since you're in there tinkering with your data collection and software?
We can look at it, I, I would, and just for clarity, the reason we're tracking the other is because that's a legal requirement. Every municipality has to report on the construction of new dwelling units. And categorize those from one unit, two unit, three unit, four unit or more. So there's a reason we're collecting that.
But we, again, I said that last time.
Sure.
We've given them the permit.
Yeah.
For an, under both zoning and under PLI, for an exact number of units. And we, so we know what they are because they're in the permits for an exact number of parking spaces, for exact square footage of offices, whatever that is, right? And so I shouldn't have to be going back through like media reports or trying to search through PDFs from the zoning reviews. And then putting in our own Google sheet of how many units of housing were built? Or how many square, how much square footage of offices? And trust me, I did this, I did this for about six pages of Excel sheets for a while, and then it's really time-consuming.
Sure, and I do appreciate that. I wasn't meaning to say it wasn't valued, but why we collect the data we do currently. And I think the, we are very careful when we change the data we collect. Because it is administrative task to perform. And there is.
I think we have the responsibility to be able to say accurately how many units of, you know, dwelling units that we permitted. Whether they were a conversion or new construction from a parking lot, so.
Understood.
We can do it.
The other aspect is balancing that with whether there's also other requests for. Do we want to know how many offices have been renovated, et cetera? So we could theoretically and track any, any aspect of a permit. And I think, I would say on my end of the spectrum is to look at the resources my department has. And how that could be achieved and make sure that it's not a, what the impact is. So I'm not saying, no, we won't, or no, we can't, just saying that it would be something that we would carefully consider.
We can do it. I know, so I'll, I'll go on a rant then, we don't want the tail to wag the dog, right? We used to do this stuff without the software. And trust me, I've been, I did my share of programming a long, long time ago. So we don't want the tail to wag the dog. And if it becomes so difficult that we can't do our job because we can't get the software to allow us to do it, then we have a problem.
No, so I'm, I'm not saying.
Good.
The software can't do it, I'm saying we have to balance.
You can keep it on a piece of paper taped to the wall next to your desk if you'd like, but that would still be a count.
So.
That would be you kind of reporting to the public officially how many units there are.
Yeah, I'm simply stating that there are various requests for different types of data related to our permits. And trying to be circumspect about the aspects of a permit that we track and.
I mean, I could, I don't want to read the emails, right, back and forth with PLI now for almost a year saying like, how many units of dwelling units were built? You know, we, let's be able to say it.
I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. And we can start it moving forward, I'm not asking you to go back ten years, but I kind of feel like I should, but I'll probably just have an intern do it. But starting moving forward, as you're issuing permits, keep track of what, how many dwelling units there are. I think it's a really, it's really important for our public policy discussion. Because people are misrepresenting the work that's being accomplished by your department and certainly by city council and by the city. And we, we won't, we don't want that. So moving on from there, let's go on to, back to the, the demolitions data. I feel like it's really helpful to emphasize that as well. That there's a range of lesser and greater danger in the condemned buildings. I think that was really, really valuable and it's really important to keep in front of us. Because those demolitions are costing us how much?
It depends on the nature of the demolition, the site, access, et cetera. Generally, a standard demolition has recently ran between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars. If standard planned one, for an emergency demolition, that is typically higher. Because the standards for the demolition changes, we don't have an asbestos survey, the material has to be disposed of in a different fashion. The contractors are likely, they have to mobilize quickly. And they have a very short timeframe to have the structure down.
Okay, so let's just use fifty thousand, so it's kind of easier math. So the more we prevent the ones who maybe is a perfectly intact building that just doesn't have water service, right? That's a condemnation, right? But that's a level one, I think I heard you say?
Yep.
Let's not let those get to the level four. Because for decades, we've done, we did that with ones that we controlled.
Yep.
But too many, in my district especially, the treasurer's sale properties fell down. I've crawled through some just last month, the month before, the handful that we could find there standing structures. That weren't already torn down in the eighties or nineties or two thousands or twenty teens. And, you know, they're, they're hard to save at this point.
Yeah.
And they weren't.
For sure, and I would.
Yeah.
Chief Timmloppli has a committee of inter-agency. Various agencies looking at this issue, including PLI. There's a lot of work going on in various veins to look at this issue. And how best to address vacant and blighted property? And to look at those, to coin a phrase, I guess, low-hanging fruit. Of the blighted properties that are not beyond repair. And could be put to productive use more easily, how can the city address this issue?
So of the structures that we have under control, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we have all been here for a while, it's almost four o'clock. So the standing structures that are blighted and abandoned properties that we have under control, do you know how many structures we have?
City of Pittsburgh?
Correct.
Sorry, I don't have that number.
I think it's two to three hundred. So while we have about fourteen thousand or so properties, I actually think it's down quite a bit. Because we've been transferring actually quite a few and we've restarted the auctions. I feel like there's only two or three hundred structures. So what we're looking at, you say there's a committee looking at this, can we expect to see an assessment of the properties that we have under control? That we could read into the record, for example, here at council and know what structures there are, where they are and what condition they're in?
We have started looking at various ways to address this. And if I'm recalling. Sister agencies, Department of City Planning has, is in the process of a grant program. To look at planning related to these type of properties. But there's been meetings and discussion between city planning, PLI, URA, Land Bank and others on, on this. I, Law Department, Finance. So as I understand it, there is some complexity to getting a definitive list of those properties. Not my area of expertise, but that is.
Depends on whether you define it as properties already under city control with the city's name on the deed or not.
Yeah, so.
That would be a really nice, I'll just say to the other people listening, and I'll bring it up in our other budget hearings. I think that's where you should start, right? Because those are the ones that maybe we've had for forty years if we haven't already torn them down. So those, that's one place to start, but those aren't the only, only structures out there. But we do, there is a very discreet, defined, known list that's not fuzzy. Of the ones that are, that have the city of Pittsburgh's name on the deed. So that's my two cents. So, yeah, because the more we prevent them from needing to be torn down, the more money we save, right? And as you said, it's, it's going to be a lot quicker to get them back on the tax rolls. Now that construction costs are up to, I, you know, we're using the number of like five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars per apartment unit. I assume even a single-family dwelling on a, on a vacant lot is something in the same ballpark. So those rehabs could be a lot cheaper and sooner than that. Takes a long time to refill those neighborhoods once they've already been torn down, as we've, we've all learned that lesson. Great, so we've got performance data, I think I had another question here. I just want to revisit that kind of, back to the kind of expedited, ask you to clarify a question about how you've already kind of put. Somebody, here it is. In the 2023 operating budget slide accomplishments, you talked about that kind of training and the project coordinator. You said was kind of multi-agency and is already starting to help people. Beginning to untangle that, those gaps in the permitting process, right?
The permitting supervisors, they, they manage PLI's plan reviews, staffs are our plans examiners. And that's added needed capacity so that we can help coordinate with sister agencies. And focus on improving that process, so that's one piece in the puzzle.
Can you give me a concrete example briefly?
Sure, so.
Like a type of project where it was helpful?
Where a individual has a renovation permit and they don't understand plan review comment. And they reach out to permitting supervisor, permitting supervisor is able to check the record. And can see, actually, this, this is not a PLI issue, this is a zoning issue or DOMI issue. And then can coordinate that response, so reach out to. Other agencies when they are involved and make sure that there is an understanding of what needs to be done. For the permit to be approved. And then provide a coordinated and comprehensive response to the applicant. And also the ability for. and also the ability for a permitting supervisor to actually contact them directly, have a phone conversation, set up a meeting with the applicant, whoever else they may need. If it's a PLI sole issue with the reviewer as well. So this is helping to get people through the process who are not familiar with it and fully recognize it's not an easy system to navigate if you don't understand. So starting to make those interagency connections and then also on, on the lookout for where the system isn't functioning as intended. So I would describe that as an interim solution where, based on the system we're operating in now. And we're, as alluded to earlier and throughout this conversation, looking to take a big step forward so that the process is much more efficient, remove the need for technical expertise, minimize the number of submissions, make sure people know what they need earlier in the process, coordinate reviews and just make it much more straightforward for people.
What I liked about the story was that you were talking about a small, what call it, like you said, individual renovation. So like a small scale, either resident homeowner or small holding, small businesses. We haven't talked about business a lot here, but a significant number of the calls to my office are small businesses trying to open, trying to get through permitting. And that's gotten a little better. So I want to, I want to mention that because it's been 10 years of those calls. So it's great to see, right? I represent a lot of Main Street with a lot of small operators, a lot of small businesses. Also a lot of small, you know, homeowners, small holdings, maybe. People who have maybe grandma's house that they rent out, you know, and live in the district. But they, you know, they're not big scale landlords. So those, those, all of these buildings are old. And so there's lots of work that needs to be done and should be done. And we don't want it to, I don't want it to be more difficult. My, my residents don't want it to be more difficult, not just for their own benefit, because if it gets more difficult, they sell out to a bigger operator. And really, that's not to any, it's not really what my district wants, right? They want to keep that local ownership of the buildings and the businesses. And so I really, I'm, I'm happy to hear that. And I would encourage us to really spend those resources, the organizational chart resources on those small holdings and the small operations.
Absolutely. And it was those types of individuals that we've focused on and that they, and the system improvements we've been talking about. They will have benefits for the regular users, but really trying to focus on the individuals who, this may be their only time they interact in the development process. And to ensure that, to the extent we can, we make it as painless and seamless as possible.
I love to hear it. I really appreciate that. Thank you. All right. That's why I'm going to have Mr. Chair. I appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Thank you. See, you never know how popular you are until you come to city council. I had some questions about, it was on a page number, but it's this.
Yep. Permit fees, revenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Help me understand this. This is like dollars per.
So.
I'm trying to understand that.
Sure. So our permit fees are based on the value of construction. So the, it's based currently on, for every thousand dollars in construction value, the permit fee is $6.
So even if you're renovating the house?
The house currently is the six per thousand. Commercial is seven per thousand.
So I hire a contractor and he or she or they, so.
Yeah.
The individual would submit roughly how much they're going to spend on materials?
Labor and materials.
I mean, this isn't new to me. I heard this, but I want to, I'm going to follow up with a bigger question. So.
Yeah. So per this table, I didn't go into detail, but the fee is based on that rate and then we have a minimum fee. So under the current fee schedule, on the residential side, a renovation or a project that is approximately $16,700, the permit fee would be $100.
So hold on a second. So once again, like I'm going to renovate a house.
Yeah.
Hire a contractor. That contractor then goes, wants to pull a permit for a bathroom and kitchen that's got some structural work, let's say.
Yep.
Like adding a bathroom. So they're going to put a new stack in and everything. They're going to add up the cost for that and then they're going to say to you, I'm going to spend $50,000 on it, on materials.
And labor.
And labor. I'm going to spend $50,000 on materials and labor. And then you turn around and do the calculation.
And.
Of 550 per thousand next year.
Yeah.
And what's the $125 a floor? Oh, that's the floor.
Yeah. So that's the minimum.
The minimum. Okay. Yeah. Because we're talking about houses and I know if it's actual floor, first floor, second floor. So, okay.
Sorry, probably could have used better terminology.
But it could be, no, it's good. But it could be, is there a max?
There is no max.
Okay, there's no max. So do you ever verify that number?
Generally speaking, we accept it if it seems suspect. We do ask for additional documentation. So we may ask for, do you have a contract or an agreement identifying the value? So, you know, for instance, we have had individuals come in and say, one example I was involved with is I'm replacing 300 sprinkler heads and I'm doing that for $2,000. I was like.
So how do you, like, how do you check that?
I asked for documentation to verify those costs, some form. You, you've signed some level of agreement with the individual who you're performing that work. Give me a copy of that. And so that is pretty rare. Most people are reporting that. On the other, on the other end of the spectrum, I had one incident earlier in my tenure where someone went out of their way to come back to us to correct the value of construction because it was identified as too low. So they came back to pay us more.
Wow.
I would, yes, Boy Scout, but also it gets reported to, in various manners. And some people are concerned that it is appropriately reported. I would say, go ahead.
Yeah. So this, this, this fee, you know, based on the cost of building, is this public information?
Yes.
I mean, other than a right to know, I know you're, I know you're really eager to do a right to know. Is this on like a, what's that?
No.
I'm not talking about the fee, fee schedule.
Value of construction.
I'm talking about the value of construction, like whatever they're, you know, someone's going to spend 50 grand. You know, the contractor says it's going to be 50,000 to, to do this and you're, I don't know what that is.
I believe we, I believe we consider that public information.
But it's not like on one stop or, not one stop, but the, I can't remember what it's called.
Agency counter. I, I don't know if we're exposing it on an agency counter.
Anyway, that's important. I want to get to my question. So when we're talking about larger buildings.
Yep.
We're talking about, you know, let's just say steel building, someone's going to, you know, we have all this conversion downtown.
Yeah.
This, so they're doing the same thing for commercial. Is that, say, we need to verify that. Like how, how would one verify? Like you're saying you would, like you as the director request those receipts?
Typically, it would be done by the reviewer if they, if they're looking at the construction drawings and then the information that's been identified, we would ask. We also have the authority to identify what we feel is an appropriate valuation. So typically we would ask for documentation and that has occurred. Sometimes the value is also tied to floodplain regulations. So we have run into it in enforcing that as well.
Have you ever had to seek outside, you know, help, like hire some company to verify?
Typically, asking for the additional documentation has gotten, gotten us to where we need to be.
All right. Thanks. Do you have one other question? But the, I want to get to that one map. This is a, it's like you made this map for the land bank or something. This one here.
I don't know. Sally may have asked me. I don't know.
Yeah. These, like this one, this condemned one. Some nice maps. All right. So my last, my, yeah, my question is, what, when will we see, maybe, maybe I missed, you know, Barb asking the question, but when will I see an in-person counter?
Hopefully.
No one asked that question yet?
Not during this hearing. I was anticipating it.
Anthony Coghill, he can't talk about how he can just pop in and get his roof permit.
So hopefully sooner rather than later. We're hoping early quarter one.
Early quarter one, okay.
But.
Any additional stand for that one?
We do have the one-stop PGH. Man, sorry.
Okay.
There is a supervisor position for the staff there.
All right. So one position.
I believe because we're awaiting construction for the site.
Oh, sorry.
We're, we're tentative, our tentative move-in date is somewhere between quarter one and quarter two of next year. And the counter will be, the counter space will be the last space that is finalized with construction and fit out. So probably closer to Q2, Q3 of next year.
Well, regardless, it would happen this year.
Yeah. And apologies. Thank you. I, I was focused on when we're going to get in.
It's okay, Dave.
Selfishly.
So this, so this counter, will it just be like the last one?
No.
Okay. What's going to be different?
So one, it'll be in a recently renovated space where clean and have enough space for staff to meet customer needs. So lots of locations for customers to go to, counter space, seating area.
But what would be different for someone who is used to doing that? Like what, what could they not get done there? Or is it everything, is it, is it like the car wash? Like you go to the car wash and you're always like, well, what's the supreme package? And you're like, you got to read all the other, the basic, you got to look at the basic, the ultimate. You know, because that's, are we, are we going to supreme or are we going?
I think we're going to supreme in some level.
Oh, yeah. We're adding on to what you could do?
Yeah. Yeah. I think.
All right. You don't have to say anything more.
Yeah. Well, I think things to highlight, all three agencies will be there. So PLI, DCP and Domi. And so if people have questions, they can come in. They don't need to know which agency.
Could you walk away with a permit that day?
Potentially, depending on the nature.
What type of permit?
Say in the interior renovation to.
I like how you get it. You're just knocking us. Roof?
Yeah. So I think for residential, things that do not change the volume of the house. So you could modify the skin of the building. If you're adding an accessory structure, you may, may need to go through a zoning process. Could be that that might be able to be handled quicker. But things that are generally contained to the, within the exterior volume are likely to be able to walk out for a commercial interior as well.
Well, thank you. Thanks for coming today. And I want to make some announcements before we recess. The next budget briefings will be for the mayor's office and the controller's office tomorrow, November 15th at 10:00 AM. And that will be chaired by Council President Theresa Cal Smith. And with that, make a motion to recess.
Motion, motion to recess?
Thanks. And we don't have anyone in the second, but we're good.